Everybody stand for the [inaudible 00:01:24]. I trust the [inaudible 00:01:28]. And I see it's America. And to the [inaudible 00:01:30]. For which is hands. One nation under God. The universal liberty of justice for all. Before we, Mary Ann, I think she has a few things to add, so. Thank you. I can't hear her. Can you see anything? Oh, okay, I'm gonna get up the phone. Okay. Prove agenda. We have one addition under new business. Race for chairperson. Chairperson. Election. Chairperson for election.
It's gonna be a P.
On your new business. P under new business. And I'm sorry to give the. Under new business. P. A race for the chair. Person for elections.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda with the one addition.
I'll support it.
Motion is supported. Motion by Stevens, supported by Anderson. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Five ayes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda. Approve minutes for the regular meeting of Tuesday, September 8.
I make the motion to approve the minutes from September, Tuesday, September the 8th, 2020.
Motion by Anderson, supported by Stevens. To approve the minutes of meeting of September 8th, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
I would say that the meeting is an abstain. Four ayes. One abstention. Next on the agenda, we have. A correspondence from National Resources.
No, financial report.
Financial report. Okay, that would be better. All right.
We began the month at $191,896.95. We took in receipts of $91,697.14. And we made disbursements of $103,801.88. Leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $179,792.21.
I'd like to make motion to approve the financial report submitted.
I'll support it.
Dan.
We're going with Dan.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Colston. To receive the financial report as reported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five ayes, motion carries. Now we're on correspondence. Correspondence from Michigan National Resource Trust Fund Initiative. Asking us to endorse the vote yes for Michigan National Trust Fund is on the ballot vote.
I'd like to read that we do so.
Support.
No, we don't. We do. We do support it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we support the resolution to do so.
There is no resolution. It's just that we do support it.
It's just correspondence.
You're supporting endorsement.
We're supporting their endorsement, and we do.
Yes.
By doing this at our meeting, it will be on Channel 6 and people will know that our township does support it. Dan.
Okay, you don't need a resolution to do that?
No, it's just informational.
We're just endorsing their campaign.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. Next on the agenda is.
Dan made the motion to support endorsement, we need to support.
I did support it.
Oh, okay. So you need your vote.
I don't think it's a, it's just under correspondence.
It's just.
Is it, there's no need for motion? It's just like an app.
That's all I'm saying. So we're gonna strike Dan's motion?
Yeah. We just support it in spirit.
The consensus of the board.
They didn't ask for a resolution. They just wanted us to explain to the people that it is not. A tax and it guarantees that funding derived from natural resources will not be diverted based on political expediency. So, any, anything that's found under part property can be. Taken up, oil, gas, whatever, and used for part property.
Right.
That's all that it says.
As a supporter.
Okay. Next on the agenda, again, correspondence from our. Lawyers, Sebert and Dzloski, from Christine Anderson. Letting us know what the Supreme Court decision has done invalidating the governor's executive orders. Has everybody read this and understand it?
Yes.
Okay. We did get an update, did everybody get the update that? Okay. We need not do anything at this point. Next is from the Department of. Health. Also. On what the Supreme Court to conduct our meetings. That they want us to. Wrong thing. Department of Health and Human Services order. They want us to not gathering means that persons. October persons to have mass, peak mass. And thousand square feet, we can have 20 persons. In a occupied room. I don't know if this room is a thousand feet.
Thousand square feet?
What do you think, Roland?
I didn't hear the question.
How many square feet is my hall?
How many square feet?
How many square feet is this?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's probably.
Think, thousand?
About 1,200 feet, probably.
How much?
Good 1,200 feet, probably.
Well, then we could have 20. All right, let's hear that. All right, then we could have 20 people.
You can stay, Dan.
You were going to, I can tell it by your eyes.
Roland's only one, he doesn't want to see your [inaudible 00:01:53].
Okay, well. He's good enough for me, then. All right. And to old business. I went to MTA luncheon. Out at. It was a nice luncheon, it was out in.
Fort Cratchit.
It was nice, I met with other supervisors, there was clerks. They talked about. Clerks talked about the election and what struggles they were going through with this election. And how confused their residents were with all the things that are being sent out to the residents and how confused they were. And a lot of the supervisors were talking about, you know, other things that were going on in their communities. I talked to some of them about, some of them were having problems with accessory buildings. They don't have ordinances like us. That they're accessory to a residence. No, they don't.
They don't have anything like that.
No, nothing like that, they're just not doing it. And they're looking at doing.
And the proliferation of old barns on vacant parking.
And they do. And they're being bombarded with what we were bombarded with. It was really nice, they had Jimmy John's for lunch.
It's a beautiful park.
It is.
That park was one that was helped design, Pamblow helped design that park.
Did she? It's gorgeous.
Which park is that?
It's a, it's on.
Craft Room?
Yeah, you take, yeah.
Is that the Covent Park?
Right, it's the Covent Park.
Oh, yeah, I love it.
Yeah, Fort Cratchit.
I'm, actually, I'm taking my grandkids out there, it's so nice.
They have the monument to the miners who lost their life.
Very well done.
Very nice, very nice. I met with Rob. He used to be a clerk, now he's a supervisor. He didn't know that I became the supervisor. So we talked. Columbus was there with her little entourage.
Columbus?
Yeah. Angie and her. I forget his name. Chris.
Bruce Christie?
Yeah. Why can I not remember his name? I talked to them and.
Bruce Christie, so. Who was it now, Bruce Columbus?
Bruce Christie, yeah.
Bruce Christie.
Yeah, yeah. It was really a nice meeting.
Good.
So, I enjoyed myself, so. They probably, they voted, I think they're not gonna have the annual dinner.
Yeah, well, they did, they're not gonna hold that.
After skipping it for two years.
Yeah, they, they don't think they can have it, they're, right now, they're not going to. Probably better not to try to do it this year, so. But at, when they have their other MTA chapter meeting, I'll go and see what's going on, so. Dan, Bob?
Yeah.
Maybe Colson? Okay. Okay, it was pretty quiet, I mean.
I just noticed the system.
All right. Onto basement repairs. Ms. Pauline, this over, you know more things about this, you.
Only because I live in a very old house and my husband has done all of this work over 40 years.
Yes.
By himself, and it's worked. And so my expertise ends at watching him. But, and that's true, but. All I know about this process is that to alleviate the damp. And the water that occasionally came in from a few corners. He dug up. He went outside and dug up. Wherever he could. And reinforced that with whatever he did, then the underground part of it. But it was all hand labor and all dug by himself, but the outside of the house. And then, the inside of the house, he put a little, you know, French drain for anything else that is trickled. But so far, nothing has, and he did this like four, five, six years ago. So, my only, my only suggestion is, if we're going to do this, we do it right. And we don't skimp on anything. And if the contractors who do this best. And we have them here tonight. So that we do it on the outside and then there's prep work and things that have to be done on the inside. That we don't skimp on this process, because this whole building depends on the basement foundation. And then depends on the leak in the roof of that side to be fixed. But I know there are multiple steps to this, I know that part of those steps are mitigating the mold in the basement for everybody's health. I know that it's going to take patience and time, because we have to move everything that's in the basement, out of the basement. Before whatever firm we hire begins. But my hope is that we don't nickel and dime this thing to depth. We do it right, we do it the first time, and we preserve this part of the building, which is our legacy to preserve. You know, Bill did a wonderful job in providing us with new office space. That they gave us all the technology that we needed. But this part is the history, and we need to preserve this. So we need to get. Thank you. We have to look, I think, at the totality of what the work to be done has been quoted. And I'm not so concerned with the bottom price line as I am with the quality of the work. So let's proceed from there and discuss these.
Okay, do you have any preference?
I do.
Okay. Well, I want to hear a personal preference.
Well, I would, I, I, you know, I would keep my preference, I think, I think these are all reputable, very reputable people. With very good references. It's just how they approach it and. And the work they think is necessary.
Okay.
So I would like, we've seen, we've looked over the proposals. You know, it's kind of like apples to apples, oranges to oranges. And what we all feel the most comfortable with.
Okay. So we want them to each give us a synopsis?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We'll start with the. Ted Ready Foundation first. Milan, have you give us a little synopsis of the outside and the inside?
What I'm proposing to do is to dig up the outside. Right from over here, all the way around. Right up to the cement over here. Okay, and then waterproof that with our outside method. Which is, we clean it up. We repair any cracks or holes or whatever in the block. Then we put a coat of damp proofing tar. And we put this air gap membrane plastic. This comes in big rolls, we put that over. I don't believe that this has a seat tile. Because it's old.
I don't think so.
So we would leave the line inside, like either under the foundation or through the foundation, to the sump well. And if there is any other lines that we run across, we snake through them and make sure that they are operable. And then we put all new pipe in with clean outs. We put two foot of pea stone. We put a fiber mesh over that. And then we backfill it. And then, in this other area that we can't dig up. Then we do that with the inside method, which we, we cut the cement approximately a foot away from the wall. Or we find out where the foundation actually is. And then, if there's any block to drill into that isn't solid, we drill into them for the bleeders, for the water to come out. Then we put a 4-inch PVC pipe onto the sump well. And then we put, we re-cement, we put a plastic going up the wall roughly a foot.
Okay. About the inside?
That was the inside.
Oh, that was the inside, okay.
Do you foresee any extraordinary problems in the basement where the kitchen used to be?
No.
Is that scarier looking than the other parts of the basement, because it is to me, but?
No, I don't really see any problems.
So, Mr. Ray, what's your total of?
Right, right.
No, it'd be.
Yeah, that, that. For doing what I explained was 15, 200. The lower one is if we did it just from the inside.
I understand, thank you.
Next would be. Always Dry?
Oh, yep. My name is James, this is my brother Eric, we're the owners of the company. What we'd be doing is installing an internal drain system, it's commonly referred to as. And basically, as Ted explained, we'd be coming approximately 12, 14 inches out from the wall. This is on the inside, hence interior. And jackhammering along the wall, removing that concrete, then digging a trench alongside the footing. Putting in a new 4-inch drain pile, encasing that with 6A stone, it's a larger diameter stone, it's gonna provide better drainage. We're gonna drill weed poles in the cores of the block and the mortar joints, hang a 12-inch tall plastic liner on the wall to divert the water that comes out those weed poles. Down into the drain system. And then we put a 4-mil bisque lean vapor barrier over the gravel. And then trial back in, new concrete, new cement. And of course, that all gets connected up to your existing sump pump basin. And comes with a lifetime transferable guarantee. The way our uncles taught us was that, you know, it only needs to be done one way or the other, either inside or outside, not both in most cases. And our uncles ran their business for 35-plus years with, and had a successful business with that method. And so that's how we do it, and we've had the same success and not had any issues otherwise, so. Eric, you got anything to add to that?
A couple of things about our system, Jimmy said that we use the 4-inch PVC pipe. What it is, is actually a 4-inch perforated S and D pipe, what that simply means is sewer and drain. There's actually drill holes in the bottom of it, and it's a rigid pipe, so we're able to set a pitch to this pipe. So the furthest spot away from the sump basket, that pipe will be the highest underneath the concrete versus where it's coming into the sump basket. That way we can, as soon as the water comes in, or water naturally likes to collect around the footing, as soon as that water gets into the system. It gets flowing towards the sump basket and gets pumped out, you know, as soon as possible. We also install clean outs along the perimeter of the drain system, so there's access to it. That kind of allows, gives us the reason why we can do a lifetime transferable guarantee on it. And we're both in our mid-30s and we plan on doing this for the next, you know, 25 years of our lives, so.
Yeah, whose lifetime?
Our lifetime.
Or your life?
Or the structure.
Or the structure?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lifetime transferable guarantee, so if the building ever gets sold, or, it's for the structure of the building.
I see, okay.
You know, so in 25 years, hopefully, when we go to sell this company. You know, Always Dry, the AWD name will continue on and that, those guarantees will be covered, as far as that goes. But yeah, like my brother said, our uncle will be apprentice under them, and you know, they taught us how to do it. They weren't the easiest to apprentice under, I don't know if that's just because they want us to learn how to do it right. But, you know, we really appreciate how, how they taught us and, you know, we were pretty proud to carry on the Always Dry name and their legacy as far as that goes, so.
We do exterior waterproofing as well, it's just not that popular of an option these days.
It's more expensive.
It's way more costly usually, as far as we're concerned, and, and we only offer 20-year transferable guarantee with our exterior waterproofing. I, I think that's kind of standard in the industry, but you know, I'm not absolutely sure on that, so.
Okay, next is.
What's their price? Well, I know, but I need to hear.
Next is Tom's Basement Waterproof.
Hello, I'm Tom.
Hi, Tom.
Hi there. So, second generation, obviously my parents own the company. 45 years in business. I came here, I looked around, we talked about inside and outside waterproofing, I know most of you are here from the board.
Right.
I measured it up, and my thought was, when I walked around the outside of the building, you could see the cracks in the walls. In this corner especially here, even when I pulled up, there's cracks in the block walls. I know why basements leak. If you have cracks in your walls, your blocks are gonna want water. You're 100% correct, the right way to fix it is from the outside. Inside woodwork, you're storing files down there. It's a file storage room, your files, all your things down there are getting molded.
Yes, they already are.
I do inside waterproofing, I got two crews that do it full-time. Inside waterproofing does nothing for moisture, you're diverting water. Outside waterproofing stops it, your walls are, you're stopping the water from coming in. Ted's, Ted here with the Delta Board, same thing, you guys have siding on the building. If that Delta Board goes all the way down to the base, up underneath the siding of the building, and all the way down to the foundation, and it's coated with tar. New drain tile all the way around to the sump pump, the thing will never leak. And it's taking care, you're preserving the building. You're not running water through the wall.
How recent a product, how recent a product is that?
It's 21 years old.
Is that a contractor's thing, or is this something?
Anyone that buy a building with tar. New construction, you.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
If I can have like 30 more pieces of this. I could do it myself.
One thing to mention about that, I've been inspector for 20 years as well.
Sir.
The big advantage of using that product is it also reduces hydrostatic pressure against the wall. So what it does is allows the water to simply fall right down to the drain tile, instead of being forced into the wall itself, which can cause more structural problems. So it not only helps keep it dry, but it also reduces that.
And also to a minimum, maybe it's a little bit of an insulator as well.
Do you go back down to the foundation?
Right, so your drain tile, and right, you know, your water is going, the water isn't gonna get behind anyway. With this building here, you got the opportunity to wrap this Delta Board right up above grade to the siding. And you're basically, your walls will never see water, and then it's stone backfill, we're hauling 90% of the dirt out of here. New drain tile on the outside, you know, stone backfill. In my estimate, I had figured to do all the way on the old portion of the building, which would consist of cutting the concrete over here where we walk into the door. Replacing that, this door here, the concrete needed to be cut and pulled out and replaced. We can get in on this side where the handicap ramp is, and that side's gonna have to be hand dug. And then I have yard restoration included, if we gotta come back in the spring and seed this thing, or whatever we gotta do.
Then what do you do to restore the, excuse me, I don't know about cement. In gravel road. The cement is restored, so we're not gonna have any raising or?
No, it would be reboarded.
Just reboarded?
Two sections here, right, yeah, same as it is now.
How, how long would we be out?
I'd be in and out here in two days.
The concrete, I mean, that would have to be reboarded and, so that's, do you handle that?
Yeah, yeah, it's all, it's all in the, it's all written in the estimate.
Yes, all right, but you, are you subcontracting that?
No, I'm subcontracting.
Okay.
So, so.
The only.
Two, two. Estimates that have, one has a 20-year guarantee, Mr. Ratty, for, aren't 20, both, both. Both your estimates have 20 years. Tom's has 10. And these gentlemen's has a transferable lifetime warranty, so. Tom's has 10, and these gentlemen's has a transferable lifetime warranty, so...
Tom's has two prices you'll need to take note of.
Oh, okay, you want, you want it in the minutes? Tom's has, for the outside, it's eighteen thousand, four seventy-five. For the inside estimate was thirteen, six hundred. You're welcome.
I have a question, Tom.
Sure.
Maybe I'm just misreading this, but on the first line here, it says Evacuate and Waterproof North, East, and South Walls. Should that be north, the east?
North, east.
Oh, not northeast, northeast.
Northeast would be there.
Right, north, east, and south, yeah.
I was thinking it says northeast.
Three of them.
It should be a problem.
Right, that's why, I'm just making sure.
Now, for the west wall, Tom, do you do it inside?
I, I mean, I had on here, we had to come back and do that wall from the inside, it was a second price, I felt that you did up to the crawl space on both sides, I doubt it would leak.
That's why you put that separate line on.
Right, it's a separate line, I don't, yeah. Or have you decided to do it all at the same time, that's fine. And then I gave you a price to do the whole thing from the inside also, which is same, same thing.
I see.
Right, thank you. Is it okay if we ask Roland, from his viewpoint of being a professional blown inspector?
I don't know, Detective Wood, if they...
What's up?
Yeah, Roland, from your viewpoint as building inspector, what, the interior or exterior method, what do you recommend?
Well, I can't give you an answer on that, I mean, really, I mean, these guys made it up, they know what they're doing, so...
Yeah, they got kinda put him in the spot.
They're both good.
That is fine.
Yeah, that's fine, you can ask.
I wasn't in this thing at all, so I just sort of think...
No problem.
Mr. Ratty, I have a question. Does your quote include, like, the stone that would be brought in, and like the landscaping and stuff that would need to be done, or...
What we do is, okay, the stone that needs to be brought in, yes, it does. We leave the trench humped up a little bit to settle down. Now, we don't come back and braid it or seed it.
Okay, I have another question, actually for all of you guys. I know it's busy, and we've talked, I think, to all of you guys, and I know it's been at least a couple weeks, if not a month. What, time-wise, when would we be able to get this done?
I, I personally am so backed up that I couldn't touch it until about March.
Okay.
Okay. Tom? About next, the 12th April?
I put in my email, if you wanted to do it this year, I'd sneak in somewhere before Christmas, but that was three weeks ago.
That's now changed.
Everybody's busy. Well, that's a good thing.
But that's a good thing for us.
Well, it's a good thing for you, it's not a good thing for us.
No.
We did that up here for...
How much?
This year?
This year, yeah?
He could get us in, you could still get us in this year?
But you can't start it before the election.
No, I wouldn't start it, it'd be summer.
No, we wouldn't want it started before season.
That on top of everything else.
Because there's too much we have to do.
Yeah, you have a whole lot of things to do.
Two to three weeks, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. Ms. Cullen?
I have one comment. It seems as though they're all quite happy with the experience, I have some concern about the number of protective clauses, the entire page that are included in Tom's proposals. That is a little concern, I think, but where is the fact that, as the arbitration clause, you did one contract with this center of the university, we always struck the arbitration clause, and so that could be problematic, it's a real serious problem with it.
The arbitration clause?
Also, the protective elements, protective of the contract, not the customer, that are included with Tom's proposal.
Okay.
I read a few of the proposals, get weeks that are proposed, but the protective clauses are seeming a little bit extraordinary.
Okay. Well, Cullen, who did you wanna go with?
Well, it's a, it's a difficult decision.
Me too.
Just because I would get the prep work all done, the sealing and straining and all of that sort of thing, and digging, I was leaning towards Tom's. I know Mr. Ratty does marvelous work too, so I would not be disappointed with either one, but I wanna make sure it's, we do it outside.
Yeah. Either Tom's or Ratty?
She was more of a Ratty?
Either one.
I, I found, I made connections somewhere myself, because it's local, and communication with local business person would give it a go out, it's dis-sell important as well as powers of, and playing the job, not having it well moved in.
Okay. Anybody else got anything to say?
Again, I, I would rather do it on the outside also.
Yeah.
And I'm leaning towards Tom's rather than Mr. Ratty, just not just because of the timing, but I mean, the sooner we can get it done, the better. I also like how he put everything on here that he's gonna, you know, come back, and he spelled everything out in here.
I just wonder why there's just a 10-year guarantee?
I can change it to 20 right now.
Huh?
I can change it to 20 right now.
Oh, good.
It ain't never gonna leak again.
Well, I don't want you to just change it to 20-year because I brought it up.
Oh, no, we do it all the time. I'm still, I have people that call us from 45 years ago that we still will take care of them.
Oh, okay, all right.
Much like the well drillers around here, and you know who I'm talking about.
Yeah.
You know the man who digs your well.
Will come back and take care of you.
Will come back and take care of you before he digs a well for a new homeowner, because you're the one without water, and you're living there.
Right.
And that's the kind of business we like to do.
Mr. Ratty, would you redo, like, where you cut, like, the blocks and restore the grass and all that?
No.
No. Well, that is why. Okay. All right. Well, what about you? I have to talk into Tom. I guess I'm gonna go with Tom's, because we, we have to pay...
It's the time element.
It's a time element, and because he's gonna restore the sidewalks, we can't leave the sidewalks not done.
So you're making a motion?
I make a motion that we go with Tom's waterproofing.
It's only three walls, you know.
Oh, I'm being, sorry. I make a motion to go with Tom's waterproofing with the amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I'll support that.
Could be a roll call vote?
Yes, it is.
Tom, that came in. Okay. Eighteen, four seventy-five. Roll call, vote, vote for it, go. Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Thank you for all of you submitting your...
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Good job, alright.
Gentlemen?
Davis, Ted.
Motion carries, all yeses in our lobby. We have a lot of people that are working in.
Very good. Well, have a good evening, everybody.
Motion carries, all yeses.
All right, got anything to talk about?
Huh?
I first run.
Very good.
Okay. Next, Senator... Thank you, Mr. Ratty. Thank you very much for coming. Mrs. Ratty?
Thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you.
You too.
Environmental Memphis Services. What did I say, environment?
Said environmental.
Did you guys tag anyone tested it?
For what?
For trial.
No.
We don't do that.
That's one of my questions, right here, tied on asbestos question mark.
So we're gonna have to get another person in here, right?
Well, we can test the material first, to see if it's positive for asbestos. If it is, then it has to be removed by a licensed asbestos contractor.
Okay.
So the first step would be to test it.
And you can give us the person?
Yeah, I can give you a few companies, you guys can...
And that's included, between the two of them.
Well, you could do, for this, you could maybe do Call Special Needs.
Which might be a test.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, we do.
Tom's willing to do it, put in a year.
You're, you're able to come to a dating, you're awesome. All right. There we go, okay, all right.
I got one question, Fredo. As far as permits and all that, come down here, pull a permit with you guys.
Yeah, we'll talk to Brenda.
Sign it.
Right here.
Get a signature and get it, get it on the books and get it going for December, okay. I will stop in tomorrow.
Get you the application to fill out.
Okay, you're here tomorrow?
Yes, she is.
She will be here tomorrow, yes.
Thank you, it's a seeing you guys.
Thanks for dealing with my, oh, the meeting's on the 13th, not the 14th, no, 13th.
No, it's Sunday.
You know, like, it's a lot of...
Ah, yeah. Actually, we were so confused, being the first.
All right. We go back to six.
Okay, so basically, as far as the mold remediation is concerned, we did conduct an air sample here at the building, both up here in this area, and then of course, down in the basement. The basement was of most concern, we had levels, I don't know if you guys have the recorder or not, but I believe the Aspergillus penicillium counts were 285, excuse me, 240, of the Aspergillus penicillium group. So what that means, there's about four or five molds that we're mostly concerned with as far as health concerns, and those are called toxogenic molds, okay? There are certain species of the Aspergillus penicillium group which could contain some toxogenic molds. Now, the average levels that they, you know, they feel that remediation is extremely necessary is when you get to 700 or more, okay, per cubic meter. We were only at 240 here, however, there's a real strong odor of mustiness and mold in the basement. So what happens is, a lot of this doesn't become airborne, because there's not a lot of activity down there.
Right.
When there is a lot of activity, that gets stirred up, okay, and those levels can certainly increase, because all the mold spores eventually fall to the floor. Soon as you start walking down there and moving files and that kinda stuff, it kicks them in the air, and so it was pretty calm atmosphere when I took the test, so. So the levels at 240, they could be considerably higher, especially when you can snow those orders. The other issue is, is if you don't do this professionally, then what happens is the mold that is on the drywall and paneling and things of that nature, that all becomes airborne as you remove it. So now we could get into the toxic molds, because a lot of the toxic molds aren't airborne until they're disturbed. So that's why they say that no remediation is worse than, you know, bad remediation. So, so it's important. So basically, what we do as remediation company, is we contain the basement, seal off any air ducts or anything, I think this is all baseboard, so that's not really an issue, but we'll seal off the basement from the rest of the building with plastic barriers. We hook up a negative air machine, which would be pumped outside, so it's a HEPA filter, it runs four air changes an hour, so it's basically a big fan, sucks all the air in, pumps it outside after filtering. So it's really clean air that's going out. So that is in operation the whole time we're working. So as we, the first thing we would do is HEPA vacuum all of the mold that's visible in the floors and whatnot, and that gathers up all the loose spores, okay? And then we cut it out, remove it, bag it, seal it, and then haul it outside to our dumpster. So that includes all the shelves down there, the desks, the kitchen cabinets, you know, any of the paneling, the drywall, that's an issue, so all those mold-impacted areas, we would be cutting out and removing. So this would all come as the first step before the basement guys come in, because like I said, if they come in, a lot of times, they just tear it all apart, and now you've got spores everywhere, and they don't care about that part of it.
Yeah, that's not...
You know, so that's why it's important to do the remediation first, get everything clean, then they can come in and do their job without disturbing this floor. Now, the air scrubber's also gonna run, I think I put it there three or four days after we're done too, so it continues to keep cleaning the air until, you know, it's... So that's kinda, and of course, everything gets to be fungicide and bio, uh, biocide, which actually, people resist stains on anything, like on the mixtery walls or whatever. Any of the studs that don't have to be removed, we would treat and clean. Horizontal surfaces, everything gets HEPA vacuumed, so. The only stipulation, of course, is that all the files should be removed.
That's it, that's your question?
Yeah, they have, yeah. I already know.
Is there mold, what, do we have to worry about that with the files?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to worry about mold?
In the files.
Well, again, the files themselves, I mean, it's, if you want, we could come and hook up the negative air machine during that process, so as you're...
That would be there.
Yep, and that way, it's constantly pulling as you're working and stuff. The good thing is, like I said, those levels weren't really high, I mean, it's 240, it sounds like a high number, we do, you know, sometimes homes that have over a million spores. So, yeah, those, the numbers could really go up in that Aspergillus penicillium group. And then there's also, you know, the stegybotus and cactobia, there's a number of toxic mold that usually are in our air samples as well, and none of those came up, so that's the good thing. So I don't think all of your stuff down there is extremely, you know, volatile, and, yeah.
It's just not pleasant.
It's not pleasant, no. So I mean, I don't know how far you guys wanna go, there is a company that we work with called On-Site Restoration, where they come in and they clean all your contents as well. It's a little pricey, I don't know what it would cost, but you know, that's another option.
We're going to go through and see actually what can be tossed.
Discarded, right?
There might be things down, I mean, we have, we have timetables that we have to stick to, we have to keep these records for so long, and those records, and maybe somebody can give our microfiche or whatever. But the idea is to condense and a lot of it.
So, are you gonna be removing cabinets and shelves down there as well?
Yeah, we need a dumpster.
Yeah, we need a dumpster.
Okay, so again, the same thing, we would, you'd wanna keep, you'd wanna keep this room concealed as well, and the main office is concealed, so any spores that you're transporting are just going straight out the door, you don't wanna drag it through any of the other...
Yeah, we put plastic there at that door, so they don't come up that way.
Right.
And then at the entrance, maybe sheets that we pass through there.
Couldn't we just close the doors downstairs?
We could, but it's, you know, it isn't that much more just to get some of that off just for safety.
Right.
And then, well, I don't know, if we didn't have this room tested for any of that, and I'm hoping that this room is still here.
No, we did test this room.
I mean, we tested this room as well, and it was even less up here than downstairs.
It's have to be upstairs.
This is acceptable.
This is acceptable.
So we don't wanna spread it.
And there are now with, you know, all the paint companies, Sherwin-Williams and all these leather companies that, uh, professional painters, supplies. We could even paint this and seal in these walls with paint, rather than...
You can bring it up with color.
I don't know what's in back of this place.
Yeah, long to big on the slate, that's what...
Yeah, I don't know.
You can just stain it white, make it look like...
Yeah, exactly. We're gonna take this roof off and see that as well. Hopefully, that won't disturb anything, and that'd be after this.
When you're taking your cabinets and your files, where are you gonna store it, Cullen?
We are going to go to, what is it?
That's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah. I mean, so if you just would get a trailer here or something that you'd store it?
Like a cot?
No.
We don't allow that.
The supervisor would yell at us.
Not happening. Not happening.
I have a question.
Where are we going?
Make a question. So, you're gonna give us somebody's, a couple names or whatever about the tile?
Test this tile, yeah.
So if...
I'm gonna look at it again before I leave, just, I don't...
To make sure. Okay, if indeed it does come back as asbestos, that would have to be done before you come in?
Yeah, and it only takes a couple days, I can come by and do a sample, I think it's 90 bucks for a sample.
Okay.
We take the sample of the tile, send it in, two days, you get the zone.
Okay. Okay.
Question? Question here?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, my question is, is the person that, um, who's gonna be removing the files or the people that are gonna do that from the township, do you wear something, you were saying that a, just a dust mask? When they do dust mask and they do that to protect the, uh, contamination of mold spores and so on?
Yes, basically, with asbestos, that's a licensed contractor, so they have to follow the asbestos guidelines?
You were talking about the molds?
The files.
The files.
Oh, the files, okay, I thought I heard it say tiles.
No, files.
Files, okay. So.
With the files and the moldy areas, I'm concerned that the, that these adequate proper protection.
Now.
We need more than just these masks, one mask.
And you want more than these, yes, you want to wear a M ninety-five mask now, they're very difficult to get.
We do.
Okay, yeah, you want to wear a M ninety-five mask because that works for mold spores, these do not work for mold spores.
Okay, alright, that's good to know.
Gloves.
Gloves, we got masks.
High protection doesn't hurt, yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Wash your clothes, get them off when you're done.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah.
And.
And as far as the box, I mean, if you're really concerned, I mean, these levels weren't really high to be that, where I would be that concerned with.
Yeah.
But if you want to take one extra step, most of your files are in boxes with lids on it? Is that right?
No lids.
No lids?
No lids.
Okay, well, any of them that have lids on them or they're in totes or anything like that, you can just wet wipe them with soap and water before going to take them out, you know, just the surface, because nothing, mold doesn't get inside if there's a lid on it. Obviously, if there's not, then you can.
Alright, so most of them are, got tops, just a few don't.
Right.
Well, okay.
We're aware.
We're aware.
Okay, so, we, first, so he doesn't know when he could come in until he checks the asbestos?
Right.
Alright.
We can do relatively quickly.
Alright, so what we need to do is first do a motion for him to leave and do it.
Okay, I make a motion to hire environmental, EnviroMag Services Restoration Professionals for a fee of four thousand four hundred dollars.
I'll support.
Dan?
Yes, I support that.
Thank you. So, Dan supported it?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a very good idea what you're doing.
Yeah.
So, roll call?
Yes, it'll be a roll call.
Yes.
Motion, motion by Stevens, supported by Goldston, it'll be a roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
We got the here Tom's list of mold horde just before. Right, more names than I. You've gone there. Now, this is something after elections as well, we're looking at?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At this point, yeah.
Okay, that's, yes. We're about two, three, two to three week timeframes up.
Okay, okay, yeah. And then, do you want to email me the info for the asbestos? You're gonna do a test first.
Yeah, I'll have to come and grab a sample.
Gotcha.
And then we send it off to the lab, and then I'll send it in.
Because maybe.
Maybe we're gonna get lucky. Yeah, right, our luck is.
Asbestos, at one time, was considered a wonder thing, easy to work with, great installer, and it still is, really, and they still use it in some instances, but. Has to be impregnated in the material now, not on the outer surface where it's like, break it, it becomes friable.
Ah.
So, they.
I worked with asbestos and lead.
Right, right, and you're still with us.
Well, every, when we worked with them, twice a year, they'd come in and took their blood test.
Oh, yeah.
And it was high, and you were out of that department still.
Did you fail?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
See, more and more people touch it here than.
Next is trunk or treat.
Thank you guys, thank you very much for all the information.
We're feeling a little overwhelmed with all of this, but people are walking us through it, so. You know, what we have to do to try to make it done.
And did you want to take a picture?
Yeah, I'm gonna go quick with that.
Yeah, the lights on. I'll, I'll be, um, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, you're coming.
Yep, I promise.
Alright, trunk or treat. Coming?
Um, I don't know.
Brenda. Someone, someone asked.
We are gonna do it again.
The Casco Township friends and neighbors, you want to know if the township was gonna host the trunk or treat?
The township hosted last year, the township allowed people to come and use the parking lot starting at, I don't know whether it was four o'clock, five o'clock.
We weren't hosting it.
And, no, we weren't hosting it. We, we didn't host it.
We let them use the parking lot.
So, do we want to allow them to do that again?
Well, who's gonna, we gotta have somebody that's gonna take care of it. Who's gonna take care of it? Who's the people that are gonna?
I'm working that day, all day.
What, what day is that?
Halloween.
That's Saturday.
I'm babysitting.
What, what time do they have a trunk?
Well.
Nobody said that they wanted to do it.
They just asked.
But if they. Let's just make a motion if they want to, they can come up here and use our parking lot.
I think most of the people were under the impression that the township sponsored it.
No, no, we didn't. I was here in case somebody, but if you're going to be here, the main, the only reason.
When I'm only working eight to four.
Eight to four, no, then you'll be gone. The only reason that I was here was if a little one needed to use the bathroom, I would have let them in to use the bathroom.
Well, and last year, there was someone here who approached the board in person.
Right, but I can, it's the third, no, I'll be.
Well, I'll say this, allowing them to use the parking lot, but, you know.
Well, it's, there were, if there were, there were.
It has to be organized somehow.
This front parking lot, it was only like, a couple, six, four, five trucks or vehicles at the most, and it was for a couple hours, you know. Um, if it's, if it like starts at four, it ends at six or something, I can be here to open up the township if they need a bathroom. But that's the only involvement of the township is, you know, we're not, you guys aren't buying candy and, and.
No.
And if you want it to be involved, then you have to bring your vehicle up.
And open your trunk.
For Halloween.
Right.
And that's what you do, if you want to, if you want to participate.
I'm brain sick, sitting here, truly.
Yeah, but this is, it was just something that they did. It was just little ones, and it was just for a couple hours. We were gone before the sun went down, you know. But I can, I can come up here to open, to open if they need it.
Saturday.
Saturday, the thirty-first.
Oh, right.
I don't even know, has Richmond said that they're doing, or Marine City, or St. Clair, does anybody know if, if.
All, all the cities and them are having Halloween.
Okay.
Then why?
Why?
Well, because the town, they want to stay in the township. They don't, these are little, these are little ones.
It doesn't necessarily have to be Halloween either.
How?
I said, it doesn't necessarily have to be.
But they, someone, if they, if they want to do this, they should call the township and reserve, we'll have, our park, do you see how many parking spots we have out front?
Right.
We'll count them out, we'll say we have ten parking spots. If you want to come and get one of the parking spots, then call us, put your name on the list, and somebody will be here to let you use the restrooms if that's what you want to do. Other than that, you just tarred up your car and come up and hand out your candy.
I can put something on the Facebook page.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, be the north parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
From what time do you have?
Well, let's say, this is, this is for little ones, so, let's say, four, four o'clock to six thirty or something like that. Yeah, yeah.
Six thirty? Well, I want to put six thirty or something like that.
Well, you can't, why not? Just put four thirty to six, you know, about six thirty, whatever.
Sounds good. Call the township to get a spot in the parking lot.
Yeah, and then we'll know if anybody's coming.
The agenda posted on.
I'll post it on the Facebook page, Jenny.
Okay.
We don't need a motion on that, do we?
No.
Thank you. No motion necessary.
Ten thirty-one. Okay. Next on the agenda, approve election grant.
Yes.
Take the lead, Miss.
I got a five thousand dollar grant for election expenses from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. Um, this is for specific items that will help run the election in the COVID era, I don't even know how to explain, but, you know, because of COVID, things that we have to do. Um, so, we are actually going to have a drive-up area for, for drive-up voting. We'll have three or four parking spots up there, we'll have a tent. People can pull up, we'll have a couple, and election inspectors out there with clipboards, they can fill out their application, then they'll come in, the workers will come in and get the correct ballots for them, take it back out, they can fill it out, and then the workers will come in and put the ballot in the tabulator, if, if the people want to do that. It will help.
He said kudos for this.
What's that?
He said kudos for this.
Thank you. Um, you know, because we're expecting lines, and who knows what the weather will be like and whatnot, so, um, we actually ordered some canapes to put outside along the sidewalk, so if there is bad weather.
That's very thoughtful of you.
Yes, um, so there is specific things that we can use it for. We can't really use it for normal election expenses.
But something extraordinary.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're trying to, you know, make it as easy as possible for people. Um, yeah, so, but we have to, we have to approve it so that I can get a check.
And I will make a motion to approve your election grant.
I support that, five thousand. The, how did you find out about this?
Um, it, it was on the, um, Election Bureau, they sent newsletters.
Okay.
So, they sent us a newsletter, and there was a thing that said we're interested in it. So, the first day opened, I put our name in there, and yep.
Alright.
And they were actually pretty quick with the response, so that was good.
Was there another thing you wanted to prove on this?
Oh, well, yeah, okay, I don't know.
Or do you want to do what's covered?
I don't know if we need to, I'm, part of it is I can give hazard pay to my election inspectors, so I want to do that with some of the money. So, I didn't know if that needs to be approved because it's payroll or if it can just go under the grant because it's gonna come out of the grant money.
I think it can just go under the grant.
That's what I was thinking.
So, are you modifying your motion to?
I just think the grant would allow for that, so that when we approve the election grant for five thousand dollars, if that hazard pay falls within the five thousand, then, then I think it's covered.
Can I just ask a question as a resident? Um, is the money going to be reimbursed from the grant to the general fund?
They are going to give me a check.
For four, five thousand?
Four, five thousand, and it'll go right into the election account, so the stuff that I buy will be taken out of the election.
For the hazard pay, that's my question. The hazard pay gonna be drawn on the check from the.
It'll, it'll probably have to get reimbursed from the election fund.
Right, so the money's gonna come out of the general fund and will be reimbursed from the grant.
Yeah. When I do payroll, I can just put now?
Yeah, when you do payroll, you.
I just put it under elections.
You put it under elections, it's the same way.
Yeah.
And you'll reimburse the grant money to the general fund, that's how you're gonna get your money back.
Well, the reaction is part of the general fund now.
The grant money will be under elections, so it will already be there.
Yeah.
And she'll put it under election, one oh one, one oh one, seven oh six.
And the good thing is, is they're, they're gonna send as soon as I do this, as soon as I sign it, I can turn it in tomorrow, and they'll send me a check.
It'll be there. Do we need to reference the hazard pay situation in this?
No, Colleen answered it, all right.
Alright, motion by Stover, second by Stevens, to approve election grant, um, roll call vote.
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes.
Heck, yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Did you get that volunteer yesterday to carry up the other roll from?
Yes, thank you. I'm excited to do that.
Yes, I am.
There was very many of them, yeah. Yeah, those are our channels right there. Canapes, whatever.
Okay. Next on the agenda is approve amended budget for election reimbursement from our March election.
I do.
Okay.
Okay, so, um.
Which is something we called, uh, less about, um, which is something we can do when she gets reimbursed.
So, I got a check from the state of Michigan for five thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents, reimbursing us for expenses from the March election. So, that money went into Ms. Laney's revenue account, and we're gonna take it from that account and put it into the elections account because that's where the money was spent from. It's gonna go right back in it.
Right, so we.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended budget for the election reimbursement for the March election from the state of Michigan.
I'll support that.
Thank you. Roll call?
Yes.
Joe, yes. Dan?
Wait, oh, 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 wait, 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 wait. Motion by, by Stover, second by Stevens, roll call vote.
Uh, yes, me.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda.
All yeses.
All, oh, motion carries all yeses, thank you. Good thing we got. Next on the agenda is approve Andrew Anderson as an office assistant.
So, Andrew is going to be helping us on the day of the election, um, being a runner if we need him to go get stuff, um, outside crowd control. We're gonna have walkie-talkies, so he can tell us, you know, the line's huge or whatever. He's not gonna be in here, he's gonna be outside, he's gonna be helping us on the back end.
Okay, I make a motion to hire Mr. Andrew Anderson to be an election support or person or?
No, office.
Office assistant?
Yeah, we don't want to poll election then.
Okay, office assistant on the day of the election. Okay, office assistant on the day of the election.
There you go.
He's the ready day.
All right, motion by Stevens, supported by Goldston, roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Well, next on the agenda, approve. Approve, huh? All, motion carries all yeses. Keep frigging that less a little bit. Um, next on the agenda, approve high school volunteers for election day.
Okay, we decided that we were going to try to get some high school kids because they all need community service in order to graduate. And then if they're in the National Honor Society, they need this. And if you're in robotics, you need more. So Vicki called all the schools, all the high schools in Kansco, the, you know, East China and Anchorage, Richmond. And we just put the word out that if anybody would like to help, like cleaning, you know, cans are going to have to get disinfected. Secrecy slaves are going to have to get disinfected. The voting is so, just helping with that kind of stuff because they're not going to be trained as election inspectors. They're just going to be helping, and it's going to be a volunteer. But we wanted to, just for, I guess, liability reasons or whatever, just make sure that it's okay. You know, we haven't gotten anybody to respond, so it might not even happen. But it was just a.
I make a motion to approve the high school volunteers for the Kansco Township election on election.
Support.
Moved and supported, moved by Stevens, supported by Stover, all in favor?
Aye. Well, that'd be exciting.
Five aye.
Right, yeah.
All right, you can do the English job.
Yeah, there you go.
Because you have a walkie talkie.
There you go.
Next on the last is the removal of everything from the basement.
So you want me to do that one?
Yeah, I'm going to let you take it.
All right, so Vicki did some work for us here. She called places and got pricing and did research online. So we figured with moving all the stuff out of the basement, we're going to need movers. So I guess the people that you guys used when you built the offices is busy beavers and the pricing, you should have a sheet there with the pricing. And they're going to give us a 10% discount for being a repeat customer.
Okay, you do.
So, and then we didn't know if we'd have to move this stuff to a storage unit or if we could possibly maybe move it up here. It's, I guess it's going to have to be like a, when we get to it, we'll figure it out. But we wanted to just make sure in case we do need to move it to a storage unit. We got that in on the approval too in case. We're going to try not to, but we don't know.
Yeah.
Right, so Vicki got us some numbers from North Point Storage, which is located in Kansco. And then we'd need. What's that?
Mr. Wally Evans.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we also need a dumpster because there's a lot of stuff downstairs. There's chairs, filing cabinets that are rusty and a lot of stuff that needs to get thrown out. The kitchen area, the cabinets, microwaves, all that stuff needs to go. So we got prices for dumpsters up there.
Who's going to remove all the stuff out of the dumpsters?
That would be you, Joe.
Well, we were thinking with the moving companies here, if, you know.
Off take the big lots?
Instead of putting it in a truck, throw in the dumpster.
All right.
Yeah, authority of being here.
If, maybe we need to talk and see if they'll, talk to them and see if they'll do that part too. If not.
Well, I don't know why they, yeah.
If they're moving it.
At one point, they walk four steps to put it in a truck, and the other, they walk two steps to put it in a dumpster.
I mean, you, of course, you use.
I use busy beavers to move.
And did they throw some stuff in the dumpster?
We had a separate dumpster day. We did our own dumpster stuff. But if the dumpster is in conjunction in proximity to the truck, one of the ladies would just say, this goes in the truck.
Right.
That goes in the dumpster.
Well, some of it, I think, I mean, Dennis is coming in tomorrow. I think I'm going to have him tear apart whatever he can at this point.
I guess he could probably start putting like a chair out in the trash.
Right.
Like a thing here and there.
I mean, he's going to have to tear apart.
Or, you know, or you know what, we could even, who does our, is Jeff's our?
Jeff's our rubbish show.
If we got enough together, even before trash day, I'm sure Jeff would come and do a special pickup.
I wrote with a free sign on it.
Well, some of the stuff I think we could put up, there's a desk down there that's not.
Yeah, but some of it's.
Garbage, I know, that's got to go. But anyway, so what do you need, a 10-day rental from Jeff's would be?
What size, what kind of, what size though?
Do you know what a 10-yard looks like?
That would be too small. I had a 20-yard for my basement.
So you need either 20 or 30.
It was almost.
I'd get a 30-yard.
I'd get a 30-yard.
You get a 30, just call them up, say like when either beaver's going to come, you know, I had it here the day before.
You got it for 10 days.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so it'd be a 30-yard.
Okay.
Now, we, my brother and I cleaned up my uncle's house in Illinois. We filled up a couple dumpsters real quick.
Good, yeah. So we need a 30-yard.
I always have more stuff. 30-yard is really big, but that.
There's a lot of extra stuff.
All right, at North Point, what kind of a big?
I don't know.
Well, would that have on for North Point if we need one? Have it determined what size?
Yeah.
To be determined.
Yeah, to be determined.
Yeah, we'll see.
And then we also need storage boxes. And we priced them out, Staples versus Amazon.
We have that down.
Oh, it's separate, okay, sorry.
All right, so.
Okay, I make a motion.
We're going to need, are you, 12?
No, wait, not yet. That's a separate item. So how many hours approximately do you think you're going to need busy beaver?
I have no idea.
It's minimal.
Yeah, it's three hours. Let's say six hours.
I have no idea.
Well, they moved my house.
It's better to.
A three and a half hour. I paid less than $500 for them to move my house.
Let's do a minimum of six hours.
But you figure if they're loading and we take it to storage, they're going to have to unload too.
Yeah.
Well, so that's.
Yeah, but it's not, well.
Well, we could put you for six and ask them, you know, if we need overtime, how much are you going to charge us, you know?
Okay.
Nine, let's go for nine hours.
Better to do it over.
For nine hours, let's do it for nine hours.
All right, I make a motion to approve from Jeff's Rubbish, a 30-yard dumpster for $475 for a 10-day rental. Hire Busy Beavers for nine, book for nine hours at a price of $139 per hour.
With their 10% discount.
Because they're 10% discount.
And then the North Point Storage will be determined on how much stuff we have, okay? If it's 10 by 15, it's going to be $105. 10 by 30.
We'll say 250.
Yeah, 188, or if it's 11 by 4, it's 250.
I'll just say 250.
Yes, up to $251.
Yeah, that's good.
Up to $251.
Yeah. Okay.
And Dan made it.
And Dan supported it.
So there's no dollar amount here yet because we don't know.
Well, so.
We know it's minimal, but that's.
Yeah, it kind of is. So we need a roll call vote?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Are you ready?
Yes, go for it.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan? Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
All yeses, motion carries.
How much junk we have in our stuff.
Yes. Well, I'm planning the election too.
Next on the agenda is approve Katie Hope to assist, she'll be assisting marking the boxes and stuff and getting everything ready in the basement.
Okay, this is for preparation and move in that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, is there any time limit to?
We'll use it as long as we need it.
Okay, I make a motion to hire Catherine Holt?
Katie.
Oh, Katie Holt, okay.
It is Catherine.
It is Catherine, okay, I stand.
All right, to approve Katie Holt for office assistance.
It's a minimum of $15.
We need to put that or we know what it is.
We.
It's starting.
It's $15.
That's $15, definitely.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Goldston, roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan? Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Vote is all yeses, motion carries. Okay, now we're to.
Now we're to the boxes. Okay, so we did comparison. A 12-pack from Staples is 77.33, and from Amazon, 54.62. So it looks like Amazon is the winner. These are durable, heavy-duty, and they are the ones that are letter one way, legal the other way. So they'll fit both sides of their files. Vicki and I went downstairs and we counted roughly the boxes that we have downstairs. And some of them are the big, heavy, which we figured we'd need two boxes for those. And we counted, was it 188?
Yeah.
So we're figuring at least 200 boxes, if not more, because you got the filing cabinets that don't have, so we're figuring probably 300 boxes.
The boxes are recent, weren't they?
Yes. And there's probably, there's.
So 100 boxes, yeah.
Figure out how much it can be. 32.654.
Twelve a pack.
Yeah, 300, like, five by 12, and then do it even.
So 25 packs times 54.62. About 1365.50.
1365.50.
1365.
So you want to round it up to 1,500 or you want to?
Did you say 1365?
Yeah, yeah, round it up.
Okay, 1500.
Up to 1,500.
Okay, I make a motion to purchase heavy-duty storage boxes from Amazon for the cost of $1,500.
darn basement. Roll call vote. Oh, wait, motion by Stevens, supported by Goldston, roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan? Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes. All yeses, motion carries.
I asked a question, does the box have lids?
Yes.
They're banker's boxes if that, if that's what they look like.
All right, next on the agenda is the resolution to adopt ordinance 202007, ordinance 30-97, amend to Kansco Township ordinance 30, section 13.31, medical marijuana caregiver. This is for the home occupation that we have been working on for the last couple of months. That will make that they have to live in the house when they become medical marijuana caregivers. No longer having, nobody living in the house.
Right.
Is there any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
No questions?
I make a resolution to adopt.
I make a motion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-07, resolution adopt Kansco Township ordinance 30-97 and amend Kansco Township ordinance 30, section 13.31. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, it'll give us now for the state of the Supreme Court ruling, we have the right as a township over land use to regulate this medical marijuana industry.
Well, it seems that it includes all the things that you were concerned about before, ordinance and collective work, regardless of what's happening.
All. All in favor? Do I have?
Yeah.
I do have to do a roll call?
Okay.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries all yeses. Next on the agenda is the application for the home occupation for medical marijuana caregivers will use for the planning commission. Unfortunately, when they go to the planning commission, it'll have to be with the chairman. We have the chairman, the planner, and have we figured out who else will be in on that meeting?
I don't think, it was somebody from, it was the chairman, the planner, and somebody from the township board, I thought.
Okay.
Well, you can't, we're talking about going to the planning commission.
They can't have an open meeting. They can't have an open meeting.
I know, but we have a representative from the township board that sits on the planning.
He can't, well.
Isn't that, that's what he's for.
Yeah.
It would be the.
Is this a free consultation meeting or?
It's a public hearing, basically.
Well.
There is no public hearing.
No, there is no public.
Just a public meeting.
No, it's not in place of a public hearing.
No.
No, it doesn't, can't have a public hearing. I'm going to have to, we have to figure this part out.
It would be a public meeting, but not a public hearing.
A public meeting.
And that would be the president of the planning commission, the chairman of the planning commission. Why would it not be you as a liaison from the?
Yeah, probably would be you.
Yeah. That's been my job.
And Steve. The planner.
And Steve, the planner.
Yeah. What?
I'm sorry, Dave, could you please repeat yourself?
All the laws are.
People laws.
Yes. Yes, they, they, that is why, yes, Dan, that is why we do not have a public hearing on this.
I kind of understand that, but I'm just sure, are you sure that all the other HIPAA constraints are?
Yes. Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Is this more about the facility itself than?
No, no, he's talking about, no, nobody's names are given out.
You can't do FOIA, we can't release, this can't be under FOIA requirement.
No, absolutely not.
No, I know, I, yeah.
No, absolutely not.
Particularly the, even if someone were to access the name of the medical marijuana grower.
No.
Never would anybody ever list the recipients of the marijuana. That would be violation of a HIPAA law.
You can't even give them caregivers.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yes with a license number.
The license, yes, they, they might, and I don't know, would that be, would the license number be public knowledge?
I've been told in other communities, yes.
Okay.
License number is issued by the state of Michigan.
Okay, so they would have to.
So they could contact. Yeah, I would have to contact the state, not me.
To, yeah, we even, we don't have that yet. They will have, that's part of the.
But they require.
We could give it out.
Right, we will, but we won't give that information out.
Right.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the application.
And what's the fees?
With the fees of $1,000. And this $1,000 covers for our, our building inspector, our heating, mechanical, our plumber, our electrician to do their plan reviews for the, because they have to have architects do their due diligence on their application to the planning commission and get a stamp plan from the planning commission.
Okay, I make the motion to approve the application for home occupation medical marijuana caregiver for a fee of, that contains a fee of $1,000 per applicant?
Yes.
I'll support.
It covers?
Covers.
I want to know how it was determined.
By all the, all the, all the fees.
The fees of.
I determined it, Dan, by everything that they have to do to get, to get their permit.
Pardon?
Yeah?
Yes.
If they were only doing what?
A plant or two.
Yes.
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 They're not, they have to do the same amount of work.
They're, they're not doing one or two plants. They wouldn't be coming to us for one or two plants.
Behind their garage.
Right.
Yeah, but Dan, Dan, the requirements for the mechanical, electrical requirements, even if you're only doing a couple of plants, it's gonna be same as the, uh, so the work is the same for our, on the township side of it.
For all the inspectors.
They wouldn't be coming to us, this is for a home occupation, not for one or two plants.
Not for personal use.
And not, not one or two plants personally, but if you have, if you're a caregiver and have only one or two patients.
Yes.
They wouldn't be coming to us.
Why would you pay the fees to the state?
They wouldn't be coming to us.
Okay, so you wouldn't have to do that as a caregiver with one or two patients?
They wouldn't, they'd be.
They wouldn't be going for a home occupation, only people with seventy, do plants come to us for a home occupation.
It wouldn't be worth the fees for the state, you can't grow plants for two people and not get a.
Right.
That might be something you should look at on the state's website.
Yeah, he's still gotta come to the planning commission, when you got.
If you're growing a cell for somebody, to somebody.
No matter how many plants, if he wants to be a caregiver in our township, he has to go through our planning commission and do follow our ordinance.
Even if they, even if you only have one or two.
Yeah, yes.
Have one or two patients.
Yes.
Because of.
Yes, he, he, we.
Each patient is allowed.
Twelve plants.
Plants, so if you have two patients, you got twenty-four plants, and then they have their own plants.
Well, and the building official, mechanical, and plumbing, and electrical, still be the same.
Plus the application to the planning commission, plus the administration fees.
The work is the same.
The work is the same.
I guess my question goes here, if you were growing enough plants, but it did not require any changes in your physical environment in a place where you were growing, because you're going there, but you still had to pay a thousand dollars, because if you did, and you didn't have to make any changes, but you were.
Uh, there, there is no way.
It doesn't seem appropriate.
Dan?
Yes.
In the field of growing medical marijuana, there is no way that you can grow it without the kind of stuff there, they need to grow this marijuana.
Are you sure of that?
Yes.
The, uh, okay.
I am positive. I don't think, Dan, you should have brought all this up before.
I don't think you need special lighting to grow twenty-four plants, I just, you know, just from a common sense.
Oh, Dan's.
You, you wouldn't be applying to the state for a license for.
Dan?
One or two.
That is why we have implemented this, because this, this is why they have implemented six hundred amps for the growing lights in all the houses that are in our township now, where people don't even live in the houses.
And exhaust systems, and lighting.
Exhaust systems, air conditioning, heating.
I'm sorry.
Mechanical, this is why we did this.
I understand why you would do that if there was, if there were changes in the electrical system, and the plumbing system, and the ventilation system required. I'm just not sure that a caregiver who didn't have their qualifications would be to do all those things, and if they didn't, I, I can't see what being sat with a bag of dollars, feet. I mean, the other way.
Any.
Dan, listen to our planner.
Anybody can grow for personal use, recreation, recreation, whatever, and there is nothing the township can do about it. If they apply for a state license permit for a caregiver, the state doesn't care if you're growing one or seventy-two, well, there's a maximum of seventy-two. Once they get that license, they could tell us you're only growing for one, but they have, they're allowed to grow by seventy-two plants. And in that case, that's where it kicks in, if they're asking, coming in for a license as a caregiver to be able to sell to other people, then they need to go through this process.
I, I agree, I guess what's actually the process is fair to all parties, whether it's small.
I think it is, because we can't regulate how many they grow under that license, the state does.
Up to seventy-two.
Right.
And that's the state regulation.
Don't they have to pay fees to the state?
Absolutely.
Yes, they do.
So they're not gonna go to the state to sell, or to have one or two plants.
No, and they're not higher than our fees.
Well, the state's not gonna charge you less because of.
Correct.
Yeah.
So they're not gonna go, they're gonna go for the maximum.
So you might as well max out whatever you can do.
Exactly.
Because, yes, because the state's gonna charge you the maximum amount, and we're going to charge the maximum amount.
I can.
What is the cha, they charge them?
Oh, we have no idea.
We have, yeah, we could probably find out online somewhere.
Quite expensive. Quite expensive.
My concerns, I, I'm not against what you're doing.
I know.
Concerns about being fair to the smallest person, as well as the person who's growing seventy-two plants under a license, like, that was prior license.
Well, they might as well max it out.
Well. I.
Yeah, there's.
Roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion, all yeses, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll talk later, Steve.
Are you gonna have it in the?
He's gonna.
I'll put it in paper, I got the motion already.
Very good.
The minutes, I mean, the motion makers, I'll put it in there, and then I'll put it in the newspaper.
Thank you. And now, will there be a summary of the, uh, ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And that will go, it, it needs to go, and I'm not trying to be bossy, but it needs to go to the paper tomorrow in order to be published next week.
Oh, that's right, it's the white screen.
Yes.
That seven-day window then would bring this to effect on the twenty-eighth of October.
I'll get it in tomorrow.
Get it to the paper tomorrow.
That is why she's staying.
Yeah, I don't.
I'll get it in, I'll get your copy.
She might even call and remind you.
No, I won't.
Thank you, Steve.
See you next week, Steve.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Next on the agenda, cancellation of bond for building permit three sixty-four. I make a motion. Three six seventy-four, I make a motion to cancel this bond.
What is the purpose of canceling this bond?
It has been out for, since two thousand fourteen.
And they no longer live in the state of Michigan, they basically abandoned the, the project.
Nice.
All right. So what I'm thinking is, we'll probably send them a letter that by one direction, their bond has been revoked, and it's gonna go back into, it's gonna go into the general. Into the general fund. Into the general fund.
So what I think is the bond is going to remain with the statute.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Does that understand what this, what we're going to do?
I make a motion to approve the cancellation of bonds.
I already did that, I mean, I.
You did?
Yeah.
You make the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I, we need a support, though.
Oh, I'll support.
Thank you.
Motion by Algren, supported by Stover.
Roll call?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
All yeses, motion carries. Next on the agenda is another building permit for cancellation of bond. Um, an addition, since two thousand eighteen has not done anything, been sent several letters, has not moved forward.
Has it said cancel the bond, you mean you're revoking the bond?
Revoking.
Revoking.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, cause I wasn't sure what you meant by, if you were just waiting at for it, you weren't gonna keep it.
We're keeping it.
We're gonna keep it, Dan.
It goes into the general fund.
I'm sorry.
These, these folks a letter as well.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve cancellation slash revoke.
Revoke.
Revoke, yeah, of bond for building permit number thirty-nine zero nine in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Motion by Anderson, supported by Stover, cancellation of permit thirty-nine oh nine in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. Roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
All yeses, motion carries. On the agenda, Early Bird Earl, I talked to Mr.
Early Bird.
Early Bird today about the back of our, um, where we have our little drive-up thingy, and I talked to him about if that would be a problem when it snows, and he said, not a problem, he would not raise his rates.
Oh, that's nice.
So I make a.
I have a, I have a real quick, um, comment, or whatever. Um, I did receive an email out of the blue from some other snow, I, I don't know if we wanna go that route.
I think they handed it, one to Patty, that's in that email up there. Mr. Schick handed that to you when they walked in tonight?
Well.
That's, I'm pretty sure that's their son.
Okay, I, I don't know who it was, like I said, it was out of the blue.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that was something we wanted to look into or not, I just threw it out there just because.
Well.
We're still taking bets right now.
We're not, we're not.
But if you're happy with.
I'm, I'm happy with him, he said we would do the back scene with no raising of our things, so.
Okay, let's see. Okay, I make, uh, I approve the contract for Early Bird Earl's snow removal for a cost of one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Support.
Roll call vote.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Roll call vote is all yeses, motion carries.
Wait, we have an addition, remember?
Oh, goodness, my little pee pee.
Your little pee pee?
Pee pee. Oh, chairman. Approved. Okay. The way, Jennifer.
Okay, so, um, I would like to give my election inspector chairpersons a raise right now. Um, the election inspectors make ten dollars an hour, and the chairpeople make ten fifty, and there, there is a lot of responsibility and stress that they have to take up on the day of the election, and the night of the election, more importantly. Um, so I think it's only fair to give them more per hour, um, and I'd like to raise it from ten fifty to thirteen.
I make a motion, um, to raise the election chairperson to thirteen dollars an hour.
Thank you.
Who's it, where are they at?
Dan?
How many, um, for the chairpersons, how many are there?
There's, there'll be three.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Roll call, Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes.
Patty?
Colleen?
Yes.
Roll call votes are all yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You really have no idea.
Uh, no, it'd be sixteen hours, eighteen hours, twenty-four hours, you know?
Sleeping bags.
Hopefully, not. Who knows?
Okay. Any question on the bill?
I make a motion to bill free trade.
Support.
Motion by Stevens, supported by Goldston, to pay bills.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes, Patty?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes. Roll call vote, all yeses, motion carries. Citizens' comments.
So, Dan, I was just gonna see how, how, how you people spend my money.
Oh.
We did a good job, it's gonna be great.
I just wanted to let you know when I went downstairs.
This is more money than we've spent, and I can't even remember when.
I lifted up one of the tiles, took a sample, and they're going to toss the glue and the tile.
Well, you know, just to tell you, I mean, you better turn that off, I don't wanna bet this on.
Can't do it.
When, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. When, when I, uh, when, when Russi was redoing the whole basement, and it got, you know, it was flooded back then, and it, it would seep in now and then. And he fixed off the outside, just like I told you, the, the outside French drain, all that stuff. And then one day, um, the asbestos tiles started coming up, and I just took a little thing and flipped them all up, all up, drew them in the trench, and I never even thought about asbestos, and there's still glue on the floor, and I think I'm feeling fine, really, thank you for asking. What?
I'm a nine, yeah.
He said he's ninety percent sure that asbestos, anything one percent or over has to be professionally.
Yeah, I just, I don't know.
Those tiles are usually three to five percent.
Yeah.
That's it, our whole basement.
When asbestos tiles really used, and when did they go out of fashion, that people weren't using them anymore?
I don't know.
He said he's.
Ninety percent sure.
He's like, yeah, and they, he just used a butter knife, he had it down there, he took the sample with him.
That's all I get.
He's using the glue and the tile.
Wonderful.
He's gonna toss for both, um, because you need to, yeah, and, yeah.
I have a comment on the, uh, terms in the, in the tax contract. I would suggest pretty strongly that you have the attorneys go over those terms, if you haven't signed the contract yet, we can read out a price, but the terms identify the contractor for a whole host of things that myself, or the, when I was working at Lake State, with a building for fifteen years, general counsel at Lake State would never have agreed to these terms, he would have struck them, the contract would have stood, but we, we would have insisted they be struck. And I suggest you have the, have these lawyers take a look at the contract, it could be worth, well worthwhile, now and down the road.
Well, Vicky's dad works for him, so.
Well, it sort of identifies the contractor against a host of things that could happen, that might not be appropriate to identify them for, to hold a language for. So, uh, none of the other contracts contain that kind of language, none of the other.
Well, this was the most professionally done contract, everything else was handwritten.
He has done municipal buildings for Roseville, um, I know Clinton Township, he's done quite a few, he did the Roseville Police Department as well, um, if you want, I know he can use some of those.
I'm, I'm sure they're reputable, I have no question about that, they're very professional, and their, and their materials are very professional, but I would just let, let Delasky and Secret go over the document, see if they, uh, think it's all right, they may, I don't know, but I can't doubt it. You know, just the terms, this whole twelve paragraphs of identification of the contractor, or seeking of the foundation, cracks in the building, problems with the windowsills, a whole host of things.
It gives us the right to arbitration.
I would agree to what arbitration calls. I mean, that's something I would have do, maybe we, all right with that, but, uh, we wouldn't have done that at the university.
Well, it gives us the, it gives us the right of arbitration in accordance with the construction industry arbitration rules of the American Arbitration Association, so.
I know, I know, but, but arbitration, more often than not, is not to the advantage of the customer, it is to the advantage of the contractor. But, even as a man, I'm just suggesting, uh, that when my.
Well, we should have had the suggestion toward a game.
They might say everything's fine, I might be told after a while on this, but I just did a lot of these things for major repairs on your buildings.
Okay. Well, we are retired, though.
Right.
So it's, I can have a look at it, but there's not much I can do about it now, I haven't. I'll have, I'll have Christine go over it.
We didn't agree on the terms, we only agreed on the price.
Yeah, okay.
Except.
All right.
Well, paragraphs and terms, I mean, that's a different matter, so, um. twelve paragraphs of terms, I mean, that's a different matter, so, um, if you don't think it's worthwhile to do, don't do it, but I would just suggest that it be back.
All right.
Jennifer?
I'll take it under advisement.
Do you have any announcement, like for election or that, just?
Very busy, very, very busy.
But you have the drop box here.
Yes, okay, we have a, a drive-up drop box in the south parking lot, if you pull in and do like a U-turn, you pull the, it's not a, you can't slip the ballot in, you have to pull the thing down, because there's been a couple people who, so they can't get in there, but they're trying to slide it in where there's no slit.
Slit.
So, um, so that's, you know, if you don't wanna get out of your car, we have the drop box over here, people are walking them in, we're getting them in the mail, um, sent out over eleven hundred absentees already, um, what else, Vicky?
What's the last date, if someone's gonna send my mail, what's the last date they should send it?
Okay, the state of Michigan says, my last day that I can mail a ballot to somebody, so mailing it out to somebody, is October thirtieth. Our election is November third, that ballot needs to be back, I would suggest, at least a week before the election, that they mail it back to me.
It'll be processed through by...
Yes.
Yes, that's, and bring that up, because that's very interesting.
Yes, I went to the post office on Monday, and normally, they can sort the ballots for Casco, so I would sort out Casco in one stack, and anybody out of, out of the area in another stack, and they would hand sort, so they don't get sent out anywhere else, and usually it's a day or two, and, and they'd be, you know, the people would get them. So she told me that the postmaster, and I don't know if she was referring to the Richmond or the US, but by directive, they have to send everything to Pontiac, so...
Oh, no.
Anything from Casco, doesn't matter, it's gonna go to Pontiac and then come back, so you're talking an extra couple days for processing.
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky.
So a good week before the election.
Yeah, at least.
So, so your best bet would be, if you're mailing it to Casco, and they receive it in Casco, that they drive it back to the township, and put it either in the drop box or in the drive-through drop box.
Or they can walk it in.
Or walk it in, but I wouldn't put it back in the mail if you got it, uh, you know, on, uh, on November the first.
Right, because it's...
No, it's not gonna work.
Right.
But we're gonna be open the Saturday before the election.
Yes, we'll be open eight to four on Halloween the thirty-first, which is a Saturday, so anybody who needs to do any last minute, you know, election stuff, we'll be here.
You'll hang out candy too.
Uh, I don't know about that, maybe people can bring us candy.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, um, I have one thing before we adjourn, um, the thing that happened last week with the threats against the governor and other state officials, I just implore all of you, that if you ever get threats, or any kind of, even perceived threats, take it seriously, and call the sheriff's department, because as public officials in that, through a lot of the ugliness that's been happening, we, you don't need that, you don't need that kind of harassment, and to get, and if there's any kind of, even a threat or a perceived threat, get, um, get the attention of the authorities, the police authorities on this. Yeah, because that's, I get scared, like, what happened there, that's scary, that is scary, okay?
Well, luckily, all the people, so far, they've been coming in, and been...
Oh, yeah.
Really friendly.
Well, like, I mean, any of you, I mean, Patty, or Colleen, and Linda, and...
Yes, Dan?
Can, uh, you do something to get hold the sheriff's department, to get some radar set up on Main Street Road? I know there's a county of...
It's, it's amazing, isn't it, Dan?
I mean...
The speed.
The speed is unbelievable.
Yeah, it truly is.
I know, they think it's, uh...
And I have seen, I have seen in different areas where I didn't expect it, you know, in city streets and things like that, that they have those, um, you know, flashing markers, and I don't, I don't know if people even think about how fast they're going, because there's no stop sign, you know, between Palms Road and here. Well, I mean, you're just picking up speed.
That, I mean, it's seventy miles an hour. I told them the other day, because of the gravel trucks, they're, they're running over to, to the, uh, limestone docks in Marine City.
Yeah.
And then the horn, it's a, and it's a class I rode now, it's a company road, and I, I drove truck readers, so I know it.
And they can do it, so you know.
I know that.
Yeah, but the speed.
Well, I called Dan Rush, and I see the trucks have swung down the road now.
Well, maybe...
Would you call Dan's, because those were the trucks.
Oh, that, that...
Maybe that's the good idea to do, is give a name, if it's a, if it's a...
If the worst time is after four to six o'clock, guys going home.
Cause they wanna get home.
And they know it's a lot nicer on the road than Marine City Highway.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And they're, and if you're going fifty-five, they're passing you and flipping you off.
It's, it's scary, yeah.
Yeah, maybe you'll contact our county commissioner, Dave Rushing, maybe, 'cause he has a direct...
Yeah, 'cause I, and I'm not, 'cause when I went in to see Bill a couple times, when he, you know, he, it, it worked for a little while.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's just the truck traffic, I mean, we're not even talking about the car traffic.
The cars are worse than the trucks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, they are, I pulled up to turn around, a piece of equipment the other day, and they got to go to the overpass, I live right by that, and, uh, I, there was nothing there when I was pulling out, and he's on the over, and he's blowing his horn like that, technically, well, I, yeah, didn't see you, could get off, and you weren't there.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, it's, it's, it's scary, and we knew it would be.
Yeah, we don't know how, but I live.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, never, never do that.
Okay, anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support that.
Okay, Anderson, who seconded it?
I did it.
And Stevens.
We have our election commission.
Motion by Anderson, seconded by Stevens, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. My aye.
My aye.